Perfect timing.
Okay. I called the order, the City of Flemish Planning Commission meeting February 20th. And, and we have a roll call.
Although, since Ruth is at home, John Barlow.
Here.
Haley Green. Van Huntsaker.
Here.
Josiah Justin.
Here.
Timothy Mellett.
Here.
Arlene Rose. And Gary Connor.
Here.
Also present, Ruth Cozy.
Here.
And our city attorney is here, as well as staff, Jason Bargrave and Chris Parkman.
Thank you. For further business is the approval of minutes from December 18th.
Although, we have approved the minutes from December 18th. Paulie Fazer.
Hi.
Repeat, so motion by Van Huntsaker and second by Commissioner Green.
So next on the agenda is the election of Chair and Vice Chair. Something that you do at the beginning of every year.
You're willing to do it, be Chair?
I am.
Well, I'll move to elect Gary Connor as the Chair of the Flemish Planning Commission.
Second, I'll second that.
Are there any other votes?
Is that a flea or?
No. Only if you can get the meetings done faster than I can. Sorry, who had the second? Meeting's done well.
Josiah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
Uh, co-chair. So far, it's been banned.
But they call it Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
This is going to the Chair.
I'd like to show some interest.
What do you find?
I'll go Timothy Milan.
I'll second that motion. So does that mean that you said something, but there was no motion to nominate you? Is that what happened?
Yeah, because I nominated you.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought.
Oh, I wasn't.
Are there any other nominations? Favor of Timothy Malat as Vice Chair? Opposed? Was that unanimous? I didn't catch. That was unanimous as well. You stand up to speed on everything there, Ruth? Good?
Let me pause for a sec. Ruth, I'm showing the closed captioning on the screen here. Are you not seeing it on your screen?
I'm, I'm seeing it on the YouTube, just not on the Zoom, which is unusual. And now you know why I'm not there. It's on the, it is on the YouTube, so that's fine. It's getting captured there.
It's on the settings here, so I'm not sure why it's not. Join up, but as long as it's on YouTube, we'll proceed.
Okay.
Well, that brings us to PC 24-01, Plotten Variance. So, welcome. Strict chair that I need to follow, make this official. I see the attorney will correct me when I win. I flubbed it a little bit, or a lot. PC 24-01, 581 Fawn Lane. The applicant is requesting the front setbacks to be changed. And the owners are Larry and Johnny Plotten.
Joni.
Joni, okay. So, the order of tonight's proceedings will be a staff report and then an application, applicant's presentation, followed by public testimony in favor of the application, and then public testimony in opposition. And then neutral testimony. And then the planning commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. And then there can be rebuttals by the applicant proponents and opponents. Followed by PC deliberations and then the final decision. This evening, there's been one application for testimony. And it is enclosed, so we'll put that at the right time. And I don't think we need to place a time limit on that. The comments are limited to saying what needs to be said once and relevant to the decision to be made at hand. Persons testifying either orally or in writing may request to continue these to address additional documents or evidence submitted in favor of the application. If this request is made, please identify the new document or evidence during your testing. Persons testifying may also request that the record remain open seven additional days to submit additional written evidence. Requests for allowing the record to remain open shall be included in the testimony. And the public hearing is now open. Do any of the planning commission members wish to declare any conflicts of interest? None, none declared. And do any planning commission members wish to declare any ex parte contacts or site visits? Any rebuttals of the lack of declaration? Any objections on jurisdictional grounds, meaning that this planning commission is not the appropriate part of this hearing? So, land use decisions such as the case under consideration this evening are evaluated against applicable criteria from the Land Development Code and comprehensive plan as presented in the staff report. And we will now hear the staff report.
So Larry and Joni Plotten own and are developing a single-family dwelling at 514 Fawn Lane and have applied for a Class C variance to adjust the front line, sorry, front yard setbacks due to excessive slope along the southern portion of their property. Some findings of facts, the property is in a low-density residential district R1. Housing is conducive to an R1 zoning type. The subject property is surrounded by other low-density residential housing on the east and west, further down past the slope on the south end as well. The site has proposed ingress and egress to the property from Fawn Lane, which is a cul-de-sac up there. City utilities currently serve the property, including city water, city sewer and water. And the property is not within the flood hazard overlay. Some comments, the building officials stated that the building must conform to the applicable sections of the Oregon Structural Specialty Code and Oregon Fire Code. A full assessment by the Building Department and Fire Life and Safety Lieutenant will take place subsequent future review. None of their initial comments resulted in any change to the proposed site plan layout. And no public comments were received. So here's some finding the fact, applying Oregon's criteria, Class C variance has set criteria. And I just want to go through the next couple of pages of what that criteria is and how the applicant has met or not met it. Class C variance, Class C variances may be granted if the applicant shows that owing to special and unusual circumstances related to the property. The literal application of the standards of the applicable land use district would create a hardship to development, which is peculiar to the lot size or shape, topography, sensitive lands, or other similar circumstances related to the property over which the applicant control and which are not applicable to other properties in the vicinity, i.e. the same land use district. So, I will just go through the criteria here. The proposed variance, criteria A, the proposed variance will not be materially detrimental to the purposes of this code to any other applicable policies and standards and to other properties in the same land use district or vicinity. But my findings, the development code discusses buildings being intended to promote human scale design and traffic calming by downplaying the visual presence of garages and fences along the street and in urging uses of extras wide sidewalks. Fawn Lane is a residential cul-de-sac that terminates in a turnaround. Traffic is primarily from residential homes along Fawn Lane. Adequate sidewalk space is provided under proposed variance without interference from residential parking. In conclusion, the proposed variance is not detrimental to any other applicable hard standards of criteria of net. Criteria B, a hardship to development exists, which is peculiar to the lot size or shape, topography, sensitive lands, or other similar circumstances related to the property over which the applicant has no control and which are not applicable to other properties in the vicinity. Among my findings, while other residential homes along Fawn Lane include slope and uneven topography, this lot experiences dramatic slope along the southern portion, making the placement of a house on the lot difficult. Therefore, slope in the southern portion of the lot makes the construction of an appropriately sized residential home difficult while maintaining the city standards, front yard setback. By reducing the front yard setback, the house will fit on the lot without impacting the slope. So, that's how the criteria was met. Criteria C, the use proposed will be the same as permitted under this title and city standards will be maintained to the greatest extent that is reasonably possible while permitting reasonable economic use of the land. My findings were that the primary use of this property is for low-density residential housing, which will remain as a permitted use and is not affected by this request. My conclusion is that while smaller and irregularly designated, designed, sorry, home may be developable on the current lot, a standard house alike in dimensions designed to the surrounding neighborhood, houses is not developable on the existing lot without the setback variance being requested. Therefore, without the variance, the applicant will not be able to make reasonable economic use of the land. So that criteria is met as well. Criteria D, existing physical and natural systems such as, but not limited to, traffic, drainage, natural resources, and parks will not be adversely affected any more than would occur if the development occurred as specified by the subject code standard. My findings were the existing physical and natural systems such as traffic, drainage, natural resources, and parks will not be adversely affected by the proposed variance, so the criteria is met. The hardship is not self-imposed. I find it was the applicant would not be able to develop a single-family dwelling alike in design and dimensions neighboring properties without the proposed variance, that costly, expensive, and environmentally disruptive landscaping. So the conclusion is the criteria is met. And for criteria F, the variance requested is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship. My finding is that the proposed variance to the front yard setbacks still maintains adequate space for front yard landscaping, parking, and sidewalk space, so that criteria is met as well. The staff recommendations, staff recommends that the variance be approved, finding that most of the approval criteria has been met. If the planning commission disagrees with the findings, it means you should disprove the variance by establishing your own findings to the future criteria.
Thank you. At this time, if the planning has any further questions of staff, it would be appropriate, but we will have an extended time for questions later, so it's more about context and overall requests. I, I have one. So the front lock setbacks change from 20/15 to 15/10. Can you define what those two numbers represent?
Sorry, say that last word?
Can you define what the two numbers represent, 20 feet and 15 feet?
It's from the, from the front line.
What's the 20 and what's the 15?
20 is front yard setback and the 15 is.
20 is to the garage.
Yeah.
And 15 is to the.
Front door.
And so both are reduced by five feet.
And this is the request. Yeah, the request was there, but the reality has grown is the garage setback for the third bay would be reduced to 15 foot. And then to the rest of the structure, it goes from the required 15 foot down to 14 foot. So it's one foot difference for the house and five foot for the garage.
Is that because of the curvature?
Large parts of the curvature. Feel note on the, the intent for that garage is a three-bay garage. So on the far left, where the sidewalk is further out, it's 22 feet, and then it drops to 20 and then down to 15. That's the way that the, the road is curved in front of the lot here.
Thank you.
Then, so then I, providing two off-street parking locations, there is a minimum of 20 feet available to provide both of the parking locations.
Correct. So you have the three parking spaces within the garage plus two additional parking spaces on a minimum 20 feet parking area. So five parking spaces, and then you've got this third space, which is the, the reduced lane.
Any other questions before we move on?
Just a point of clarification on page three of three. Most of the approval criteria has been met, but you also stated earlier that all of the. Haven't they all been met?
They have all been met.
Okay. You want to read that part?
I'd be happy to. Okay, just summarize it.
I've, I've been embarrassed in the past when I read it and then I see, oh, it's a city attorney.
It's, it's my only opportunity.
Taken by the hour or by the word?
So while the applicant's thinking about their presentation, just want to take this opportunity to remind those that might be testifying tonight to direct your testimony towards the applicable criteria in the, in Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan that you believe applies to this decision. Favor to raise an issue accompanied by sufficient evidence to afford the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue recludes an appeal to the land use for the appeals based on that issue. The favor, favor of the applicant to raise any constitutional issues related to any of the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond recludes an action for damages in the court.
Thank you. Okay, we will now hear the applicant's presentation.
You guys have pretty much everything you need, I think. I was going to be backed up by the builder, Doug King, but the football team is in a playoff tonight. And I gave him permission to not back me up and go to the, to the game, sir. So I'll do this myself. You all have copies of, you know, the proposed plan. And you can see, you know, the cul-de-sac comes down. And this is a picture I took with my drone before I lost it, went out of radio range and never came back. But it, it shows the cul-de-sac and how, and my house, which is right next door, our house. And, you know, quite a bit of land is cut off by the cul-de-sac. But the hill, this is looking at our house, you know, it, it doesn't go anywhere. So there's not a whole lot of flat land. But one of the things we did in asking, well, in designing this, is we designed as narrow a house as we could. We made it a little bit wider, a little bit narrower. And also, we made sure that we added another, we were only going to do a two-car garage. And then two spaces, but we saw that we could get a fairly long driveway by putting in three. So that first one's pretty short, maybe you might need some leaflet fit in it, but yeah, it's pretty short. The other two are much more workable. And then there are these two places on the street in front of the house where you can have standard-sized cars with no problem. So, we are, we're trying to do, you know, everything we can to make this, this work well. I, I brought a whole bunch of pictures, you know, just to, in case I needed to make the case, but it sounded like it got made pretty well. This is one that shows, you know, the slope and that the houses are built on that slope. This is another one I took, you know, before I lost my drone, but I might find it someday. And then this is looking at the lot just from the cul-de-sac. And it's now landlocked, so that's another thing is, is, you know, we're going to be working on the slope. We're going to be taking out dirt. It'll be a bit challenging, but Doug is willing to do it. And we would like to get it built and put a house that makes sense on that lot and into the tax walls. And that's, if you have questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you see that picture again? Yeah, that last one you held up.
I guess I, we ask questions now?
If, if your presentation is finished and there's nothing more that you would like to present for new information, then we can move on to questions.
I, I submitted, you know, that, that proposed design. So that tells most of the story. So I'm happy with that. And then I brought these pictures that, that give you a better idea, and I'm willing to pass them around. They give you a better idea of what's going on on that hill. And then I had just one. Since you all have learned out, I think that'll do it. There's just one Z on the hill. So this has, you know, a good, I don't know, 15 feet less flat space than my house here. So.
Hey, I don't know if there's any code concern about this, but.
Let's hold on. Let's go ahead and pass these down the street so that people are interested.
It's going to be a mass board design, and they're doing the design and engineering of it. And once we know what we're doing, we'll go ahead and commission that.
We haven't finalized the. Plan?
Mostly, it's the inside of the right side that's not, you know, where there will be things deep around and there are going to be two-walking closets, you know, like I said. But the. It won't affect the outside layout of it.
Hold on. I'm going to give you the opportunity to say whatever you want to say presentation-wise, so that we can officially move to the questions from the commission, in which case you'll be kind of limited to answering questions.
Can I get a copy of that, man?
And Commissioner Green. If, I heard that one picture went to you, but didn't go to everybody else?
Yeah, it's.
The back one?
It's that, no, it's.
Sorry.
No, I think I did it, I did it. I'm the culprit. It's there. No, it's almost all the green grass straight on from the front.
Yes. So this shows the utilities, the lot that's there. We were just, you know. Just want to make sure that the commission has access to the same photos. And, and I'm trying to make sure that everybody hears everything that's spoken rather than side conversations. Can I hang on to these copies for the record, or do you want me to make copies of them?
You can have these.
Okay, we'll just submit them with the, with the record.
And I don't really know what else to say, and I don't really have anything else.
Okay, well, thank you very much, but if you could just stay there a moment and go ahead, questions? We were just looking at that picture that shows, you know, the utilities, the site improvements, and kind of comparing that to this house layout. It looks like those would be, if not right off the corner of bedroom two, directly in front of your porch, maybe. So, I just, I don't know if there's any code concerns as far as setback for that, but I just.
I'll tell you one thing about on-lane and those lots. Most utilities have to move, because the lots were rezoned or relaid out after the utilities were put in. So I've been pretty much expecting that if something has to move, we'll have to move it.
The, the layout that you have here, you show three-bay garage, you show one bay as a shop. In looking at this, if you were to take the, the two bays, the one, the center bay and the shop, and make that the garage bay, and the building was moved back one foot, we wouldn't even be here.
Well, you're supposed to have a 20-foot on the garage?
20 foot, so your center of your garage would be at 20 feet. Your center, your center, you show 15, 22, the center's 19, 20 feet. The center one, if you use the 22 and the, and the middle one, you would be, you would be getting it very, very close to your, to your 20 feet, and even it's 19.
Yeah, the reality. The shop probably is going to be on the 15-foot side. Or that will be a three-car garage if there's enough space, like the Cozy's house. It was actually in one of the pictures here. It shows, you know, three bays. And I was looking at theirs, and the short, the shortest part of their driveway on the cul-de-sac is that, that bay, which would.
But, but.
Those layouts are subject to suggestion.
Yeah, and, and, and though all I'm saying is, is looking at it that way, you're within one foot of meeting the letter, the letter of the, of, of the code. What, I, all you need to do is say yes or yea, your name.
I don't know, because, I mean, I look at the way that this curves around, and I drew this, and my measurements are approximate. And, and I took it as an engineer, I took it literally, there's a line, it's the garage line. And I said, the garage line gets this close to the sidewalk, and that's where we moved it. So, so we're applying for the variance. And, and I think it's, it's going to be very workable this way. I mean, and like, like you said, likely the shop will be on the short side, and it may be its own door, its own roll door.
Yeah, okay.
On the backside here, comparing it with the pictures, there's that arrow that goes, that's the 57-foot. Because how much further south of that does that slope start? Or is it about right there?
The slope starts, there is going to be a pretty radical foundation. The slope starts, there is going to be a pretty radical foundation anyway, even with this variance. So there's about thirty-five feet of flat space.
Oh, useful right now.
And so then it starts going down there regardless, so we're, we're still going to have to you know, put in some shells and steps into that foundation.
You, you can kind of see on this one here, at the top of the slope, kind of runs directly into the building.
Oh, oh, I didn't open mine up because That's probably the best, oh, okay, that answers that. And then as I was looking at it here at the front, um, it says porch where those two dots are. So that, that's even closer to the sidewalk than even the fifteen foot of the driveway for the garage. And I don't know that, how that works in terms of what we're allowing.
It's very shallow, it's, it's a mass court. So one half of the house is a mass court Godfrey and it's a very shallow, like four foot porch. And the other half is one of the other mass court designs that we're mashing them together, they're going to do that for us.
I, I was concerned about that pace from the sidewalk, you were having a night feeling like you're in your home on the street.
Right.
And so I walked it and looked at it and I felt comfortable about it after Doug walked us through the measurements.
All right. Any other questions for the F?
Uh, yeah, I, I didn't visit the site, but I did look at it on apps. Doesn't look like there's a lot of fencing in the neighborhood, but I was just wondering if you guys intend to put up a fence or?
We don't.
Okay.
Were you thinking we should, or we would?
Just asking if you are I mean, well, there's, there's code for fences and with this, you know, setback, um, I think that's a consideration to talk about.
We're not lighting on fencing there at all.
Right.
Does either neighborhood fence?
The neighbor to the west has effects on their property. And I think one of the pictures shows that, the blue house. Yeah, so they have a fence pretty much on their property line.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Excuse me, Chair Connor, can I interrupt just a moment?
Sure.
Chris, there is some testimony out on the copier that was received earlier today that um needs to be distributed.
I just got my shirt over, sorry. But I'll leave. Because I know, I need to know if it's in there. Only we have a perfect sentence here.
We're still in
Yeah, let's wait for
We're still in testimony.
Yeah, we have to hear public testimony now.
There's no H O A R.
We have to wait.
Do our C C N hours?
We should, we should wait until Yes. I guess I read it all anyway. Uh, we'll now move to public testimony, beginning with testimony in favor of the application and please send in or write your name, which we have a couple. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the app? Hearing none, does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Same one. Oh, it's, it's one
Steve submitted this earlier today by email and tonight he provided a replacement copies of the image that he sent over. And that you already have the written comment, the images that were at your station when you got here today.
Okay. Yes, just now.
Just, oh, those, the two
They got the smaller version that was attached to the email.
Okay.
I have a larger copy here. Please introduce yourself.
I will, I'm Steve Seager, I'm a Fulomath resident. I've been listening carefully this evening and I, I want to first say that it takes a lot of energy to build a house because I've done it, I know for myself. Uh, it also takes a lot, a lot of energy, uh, compound it. We construct well on slope, in particular, a very steep slope. But then that too, so I understand the the uh the constraints, it's, it's important to honor that. I appreciate the effort, so our applicants, it's a lot of work. That's kind of philosophy number one. I'll begin my gist of the remarks here, that generally I support this project. And for Fulomath, uh, in particular, its, its nature is, is that there are many opportunities for building infill housing, new housing, which we need, which are, we're clear for that. So yeah, this is a, this is a very good thing. I'm troubled by, however, and the reason I checked the opposition blog. I'm troubled by the idea that if we're not very careful to communicate in analyzing uh a, the existing constraints, the pre-existing constraints that overwhelm in general, the available buildable sites and lots and the past policies and past precedents or fear of creating unfortunate new precedents. If we don't apply our, our critical thinking and really grease the bubble a little bit to explore options to development, then we miss an opportunity in my experience to uh really get a, a superior installed home on a difficult lot and that, that would be the best win-win kind of result out of this. So again, I oppose, I oppose the the evil of a variance on the following single point, and that is, I think in, in, in uh disagreement with the staff report, I think this is a self-imposed hardship. Because Mr. Uh, well, to echo Commissioner Mullis' comments a few minutes ago, the plan as it sits now in its developing state, it's still a little flexible. And if we're just talking about a quick flip-flop of a couple of spaces, let's just swing in for a second. And a repositioning of maybe a foot or so, which is nothing on that kind of scale of construction. I shouldn't say it's nothing, it's manageable, that's a better, that's a better term. To, uh, if, if one could make subtle adjustments internally that will produce a positive small reduction in the exterior footprint, the perimeter footprint and position, then we don't need a potentially a precedent setting variance uh that can result in problems in the future. So there's, that's the, the gist of it. I we're busy folks and we don't always get to go visit every, do everything we want to do in a day or in our constrained time. I took some time today to drive around the neighborhood on the following, I took a few pictures myself. There's nothing new out there, that it's a bloody steep slope, it's a tall slope. It's a notch, the, the slope we see is probably the mountainside that's been there since before time with a pad created for the cul-de-sac at the top and the lots prepared and all done via the subdivision mapping, planning, approval. So that process produces a buildable pad for a significantly growing needs place. So when you come to the lot, you are given the circumstances and you have a choice now, buy it or not. When my wife and I bought our property in Fuloma sometime back, the sloped lot, she asked me, uh, looking through the trees and the landscape and Mary's Peak, I quote, can, what do you think of this? And I said, I can build a house on this lot, I know how to do that on this slope without any uh extra offsets or, or relief from the given circumstances. We presume we're able to do the house without cutting down large trees. All of this about, well, and not having, well, we have a driveway that's at sixty percent slope, well within the twelve percent that you theoretically need to have in an ice environment. So I, I'm dwelling on this for one second more to simply say, if we understand the constraints, then we're on the path to success. And I think um pairing that with Mr. Mullis' insight and the comments I heard from the applicants about certain flexibilities within the plan, there's an opportunity to mitigate this front setback concern, you could solve that problem creatively and not result in a precedent for later problems. So that's the positive thing, the, the, something that sounds like a negative here for a second is my two diagrams that I, I brought in uh to distribute today. First on, on attachment number two, I, of course, I'm all done and I sent it to Ruth. And I looked at my work, one more time and I saw two type of veritable here and sort of thought, oh, darn, moves there. So if quickly look at the attachment two, there's a little white, appears to be a little white Band-Aid on two of the lots, number five ten, block eighteen. My title was to escape the proposed dwelling to last year, the most structures, little homes were actually there with a little footprint in black light, etc. And then putting the last first, the, the footprint of um the applicant's home plan that was provided in the application, I, yeah, I walked out of the house about a day. What's on number two is that footprint measured precisely, this is, is a precise scale. This is printed at half size, not the full size originally, so this is a six feet of the energy of the foot. So you could take the ruler and that's really it. Likewise, the, the bigger context image, number one, no errors there, but I could see from the flow. But I, I did this because I was trying to figure out, well, what's the rest of the neighborhood look like? And so you take the south side of Fulon Lane at the bottom. The bottom is here on the street, those are the lot lines in yellow. And their X lot numbers are there, uh, addresses in red, street addresses in red. And then I simply ga- gathered inform, the mapping information from Sidney County, married them on top of each other to precise scale. And in this case, it's uh, it's a one to forty scale, because it's half-size, but it's written as one to twenty, curtain inch. But we can see the, the outlines of each of the structures built along the south line of Fulon Lane. And between among five oh six, ten, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-six, uh, well, maybe a little less on five oh six, but certainly twenty-two, there's a significant extension of the structure pass underlying top of slope, if you say top of slope. And you know, that's a normal thing you do when you have a constraint. Sure, exactly. The, the, the lap, so what I'm saying is there are there are techniques or tools available to construct in this kind of setting. And there are many options available to achieve the intended plan, including a big like basement for sure. Uh, or a cantilevered structure that could extend over the slope without touching it at all. There's some engineering involved, uh, structural engineering. One can, let's see, there's an example I photographed One can, let's see, there's an example I photographed today, probably five eighteen, maybe it's five eighteen or five maybe five twenty piece of walkout basement, I think, probably.
Ours is five eighteen, it just has a large crawl space.
Is there?
This one would have fairly large crawl space, which is HVAC and the hot water. And we're really looking to build a single floor. But get what I'm saying, that's around, definitely under square.
I'd like to finish my commentary and then I'm happy to have the conversation, believe me. Anyway.
Do you have any more points to make?
I do, I do. There, well, if time is not a problem, I have good comments.
Time's always a problem, but I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna cut you off unless you ram along.
And I don't need to say much more. That, what I'm trying to get to at this point to wrap it up is that you can construct a flat plate house, one level floor, which is fine, never mind that. Simply by engineering a foundation to support it over a slope. There's, there are easily half a dozen ways to accomplish that. Some cost more than others, depending on your circumstances, depending on who your builder is. Depending on the soils, depending on the marketplace or concrete. There are many factors, but to say, I can't do it, is unfair. It's, it's not true. Technically, because the proof is in the pudding. There are half a dozen houses doing the same thing that's possible at at five fourteen. So I'm not here to say, don't allow the folks to build their house. I'm just saying, let's be smart about it. So that there's a win-win situation for the applicant and the public at large that's affected by the accumulated weight of bad decisions. We're living with that all over, all over us now.
Are there any questions for the speaker?
Yeah, I want, I want to do a little clarification of my question to the applicant. My question to the applicant was was to indicate that they are very, 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 very close to meeting the letter of the plan. We, we, we are not doing something that is, that is really out there, well beyond. They're not asking, they're not asking something that's unreasonable for us to be taking a serious look at. And that's, and that's, I want to clarify and use my words in that. When we get into deliberation, I have some other comments. There's some other sections of this code that are going to come into play, that's going to address some of these issues as well.
Do I get to respond? Start to me.
Well, I didn't hear him ask a question. So if he didn't really ask a question, I, I hesitate to begin a, a long conversation or else these, these hearings go sideways.
I would simply like to say, I think we agree that we're just trying, we're very close to a case, a situation where a variance is not necessary. That's, that was the control I was trying to locate, all of that.
And I, the question I had for you, and you were talking about it in terms of having the variance affecting future things elsewhere within this city. So you're suggesting that if we gave a variance for this, it makes it easier for somebody else to come and ask for a variance for some other reason.
Exactly.
I, I thought that's what you, yeah, so.
I have a question on this line. So I, I understand what you're saying is that the house as proposed can be built on the lot without a variance.
Yes.
But there would be negative ramifications if a variance was approved. Can you more succinctly indicate what the negative impacts would be?
Yes. Others come with hat and hand and say others come with hat and hand and ask for variances that were self-imposed problem, self-imposed, what's the phrase, self-imposed hardship. That's a slippery slope, remind you. It's better to philosophical standpoint, build a homework and avoid a slippery slope.
I see your perspective. I, I think I understand that. But also, I, I think it's important to note that this commission
Can we try to reframe from the beginning of deliberation?
Well, it's got deliberation, I don't want to respond. Every variance that comes across this commission, we measure it against hell, always. And we consider what are the negative impacts to the immediate community? And I think he's really done a lot of the homework and you can see that in his report. I think Rob was really deliberate and determine where the pros versus the cons. And I mean, I hear what you're saying, that we don't want to set a precedent, but I don't necessarily think we're setting precedent with any variation that we approve.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you. Would your concern be adequately addressed? We rejected that portion of the staff's report that criterion E, the hardship is not self-imposed, is not met. But then accepted the original staff report that the variance should be approved because most of the approval criteria are met. Would that satisfy your concern that in the future we'd be on this slippery slope?
No.
Well, let me finish my, my answer. Satisfy your concern that we're on a slippery slope with respect to finding a hardship.
Here. A question to me. I would not, that would not satisfy me because I know that I know that attorney, that my intuition is telling me that there's a problem waiting out there. I think that evidence or the, the the picture is clear to me anyway, in attachment one, which is really just a way of grabbing what you could see on Google Earth or Google Maps and putting it on a piece of paper. The information is there. The, the lot was existing, the slope was existing in advance of beginning to design, but like we all, we all designed to the limits because that's what we did. That's okay, nothing wrong with that. I'm just suggesting that this particular proposal is a little bit past the constraints by about a foot, it sounds like. If we're agreeable with Mr. Mullis' rough analysis, but you know, I think it's doable both ways, either way.
I just have, you obtained these graphics from the GIS site from the county?
Correct.
Okay. I, I'm gonna make a statement. The statement is, is these, these, in my own lot, which happens to be on the same street at another location. I can tell you right now that the representation of the lot lines and the reputation, representation of the buildings are not accurate. And they're never meant to be accurate for the purposes of the GIS that's been there. It's a, it's a rough approximation. So I, I just want to get that into the record, that that's, that's what these documents are. And when we get into deliberation, I will, I will talk internally about that.
So I, I completely agree with that point of view, because the G I R system tells you that right on page one. There you go there. My two documents and the two diagrams here say approximate scale. And these are sized by proportioning the the image downloaded to the scale they provide in the download, enlarged very carefully. So that if you measure them, they're, I mean, they're approximate, yes. Is it rocket science? No. But it's close enough to understand that the buildings, half dozen buildings overlay the top of the slope enough to be able to make it an arguable case that it's possible to construct. It's not hard.
Are there any more questions?
One follow-up. And I, I'm asking this sincerely, because I'm a relatively new member of the commission, on it for about a year. And I understand you've testified before the commission before. Has, has it been your experience that there's been, for lack of a better word, abuse of the hardship? Self-imposed hardship exception in, in the, in the criteria applied by the, by the commission?
I'm not aware of any testimony, neutral testimony. And so this point, does the planning commission have any further questions of staff?
Yeah, on, on the variance itself, the twenty fifteen and the fifteen, yeah. So if I understand our code correctly, the garage is supposed to be at least twenty feet, twenty foot setback. And they're asking for a fifteen foot setback. What's the fifteen ten four?
Well, it's a question for staff because I, I'll throw in a tiny bit of commentary. I think we need to be careful about the specifics of the proposed concepts versus the exact request of a variance, because once a variance is granted, it will allow other actions. So at this point in time, that, that would.
Well, I just want to know what.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I was just kind of laying that, that foundation because we often have questions along those lines about what is the applicant specifically thinking they might do, but we need to be careful not to take that. Is there anything recurring and they'll be able to work within that once they get it. So your question is exactly appropriate, I believe. So that, that, that fifteen feet that is proposed to be reduced to ten because any other portion of the house that's not a garage.
Well, no, I just, I'm just asking in terms of what the code said.
So Van, the code you want to look at is eighteen thirty-five zero three zero.
So it's twenty for the garage and fifteen for everything else.
You have minimum setback fifteen feet required, except an unenclosed porch maybe within ten, garages and carports. Access from alleys or otherwise setback twenty.
Any other questions for staff? We'll now move on to rebuttals, beginning with the applicant rebuttal of any information raised during the public testimony. I will remind the applicant that new information in support of the application may not be introduced during the rebuttal. Does the applicant wish to rebut any of the testimony presented? The microphone in this room stomps it on the back of that chair.
So our, our builder, Doug Shag, you know, in that little lot area, he requested affordability that we build a shallow house, but we need to build a house that is sellable in that neighborhood. And so we're going for seventeen hundred-ish square feet in that footprint. And I, I agree, it is possible to build it over the slope. One of the reasons, well, a, a big reason that we're talking about this is it is materially more expensive to do that. And so, you know, moving the house more onto the flat part of the lot saves a lot of effort, saves money. And we are trying to meet, you know, the intent of having enough parking spaces in the design. My interpretation, but not being, you know, a builder, is that there's a garage line and it's an open space. And, and that line is the fifteen foot line, so that you're getting parking spaces at a certain level. And so because of the tip of the cul-de-sac, we're gonna put in the three spaces and there will be at least one parking space of the specified length. That, that's basically my statement. It is buildable further over the slope, but it's even only more expensive.
There's a quick consideration that it's been hard for people to find builders to build on that slope, in general, good ones especially. We know Doug's a good builder. He built for Chris, our neighbor. And we're going by his his suggestions and his recommendations and his expertise that it would be better if we didn't build further out on the slope. And he's the builder we'd like to work with and we're afraid to lose him. So that's just.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to rebut any testimony?
I don't think so. I think the state is.
There have not been requests for continuance or hold the record open. Does the applicant waive seventy-three, submit a final written argument? So we're going to deliberate now? So the public hearing is now close?
Here we go.
No, you can, you can stay and listen.
But you can't leave.
But you can't campaign for your cause inside the building. We might get in trouble if we did, though.
Evidentiary portion of the public care rules. Mission would have to reopen to ask any question.
So now we are at deliberations where we can say things and talk through the issues. And I'm sure all of us have something to say at this point. And I'll go ahead and let you start.
Let me start, Mr. Barlow. As I discussed, as I indicated earlier, when I talked to, to the applicant, you know, there's a possible moving the building back a foot. And I'm trying to say about that is, is they're coming really, really close to meeting the criteria. I'm not saying I want them to meet the criteria. Because I'm, I'm being a, a neighbor in that neighborhood. I'm well aware of the issues having to do with the slope, the slope stability. And there was a comment made that that was on cut or natural grade. No, that is on fill. And that is a knowledge that I have by being in the neighborhood. So, and so pushing a building arbitrarily, which is the term I'm going to use here, because I believe the applicants have done their due diligence. So I'm gonna use the term push the building arbitrarily back onto that slope. It's not in the best interest of the neighborhood and the safety and the like of that, in that area. If you were to look at the line of the fronts of the houses along the south side of Fawn, this house is going to be setback from their current residents and is also going to be setback from the resident. and is also going to be set back from the residents on the other side. That's happens to be a flat, like lot. In addition, if we were to take the documentation that, that the, that the other gentleman provided, EIS, if you go down the end of the street to buildings five on, at five twenty eight, you can see that that looks very, very close to the property line. I don't know for a fact whether it is or isn't. And then I'm trying, and that was one of my reasons for questioning the graphic, the graphic presentation that was provided here and that it is inaccurate. And I would not want to use it for deliberation. I am concerned that the applicant themselves didn't, didn't provide a more detailed drawing with more dimension. But like, as I've indicated, I, I, I am for myself. I take no exceptions to what they've requested. I believe it's within, within, they've done their due diligence and it's within a reasonable amount. And I do not see it in any way, shape or form, setting a precedent for the future. Each of these sites need to be addressed independently as they relate to all of the issues having to do this site. And if they were asking to put this house five feet from the property line, I think we'd be, we would be setting a precedent, but putting the house itself fourteen feet away and the actual driveway of a two car garage, which we require two off-street parking, and since this is more than a quarter mile, I think from the corridor, we still have to enforce the parking. And that, um, that we're at nineteen to twenty feet in that center stall. And a parking stall in a normal parking lot is eight by, eight by sixteen. It's a typical size. So I, I, I see that we're meeting it on parking. I see we're meeting it on visual. And I see that we're meeting the basic intent of what our code is, and that is not to have a building that sticks out, has the garage stuck out in front of everybody else's. This garage is still going to be set back.
Yes, thank you. It's an opportunity to remind the commission that you're fact finders, not fact givers. Men deliberations restrain yourself from introducing facts into the proceedings. So we had the fact about the fill, I would recommend that you disregard that. Or you open, they have to reopen the record to allow anyone to testify about that fact that was introduced. Number one. Number two, about precedent, only court set precedent, this body doesn't set precedent. I understand the concern and the nature of that, but technically you don't set precedent. City council sets precedent, but not in land use decisions, but that's a different matter. And so you don't make precedent. I understand the concern about allowing certain things and then you feel, you know, like your necessity to, to be, to have continuity and consistency in your decisions. But you're not really a precedent setting body. So maybe not use that term. I know others use that term, but as you think about it, you want to be consistent. And certainly every piece of land courts have established is unique. So every lot is unique, no matter how similar it looks to another lot. So you are making decisions based on independent lots. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I learn every time, learn something every time you stop. Somebody else want to go next? I got a list. Nobody's going to jump in. I, I think it's always important to think about the intent of our code and why those rules are there. And I think it's, it's a very unique cul-de-sac. You know, you've got the lots down the straight part of the street. But then a common cul-de-sac would have like a ring of houses all closed. And in that case, you know, if, if every single house around that cul-de-sac was somehow had a reduced setback, it would, it would produce an effect of the houses all getting close to the road and changing the nature of the neighborhood and, and consistency. And, but I think it is significant here that, that because these houses are set further back, there are no other buildings close in on that. And the fact that the, the nature of the lot with, with it being hollowed out in the center with the reduced setback, it would be pretty difficult for them to build a house that gave that setback all along that, it would have to be a curved front of the house or at least stepped in and out. And because of that, because of that curve, that reduced off setback would result in, in standard setback at the property line on both sides. And as you're walking down the street, you're going to see a row of houses and that house is even going to be back a little bit because of the way that curves in and then the houses at the end will be further back. So I think just from a, from a design standpoint and a neighborhood characteristic standpoint and, and parking, that I, I get the feeling that it meets the intent of our setbacks. And I think that's significant. And a- as far as, you know, applying our standards, it's always, I agree that we're not, you know, setting precedents and it is unique. And there's another house in a cul-de-sac, it's going to be a different cul-de-sac and it'll be a different situation. That said, I, I think also the buildability of a lot, you know, something that's come up on multiple, multiple of these is, is it talks about hardship and it's impossible to find, to define the line between hardship and, and just a little bit harder than normal. And, and it's also not just about how much money it would spend, but it's about the kind of development we want in the city. And we want to reduce the barrier to housing cost. So I think we like to do things that are, that accomplish that just in general across the board. When they're not, you know, the, the criteria here that it doesn't have an adverse impact on some other criteria, I think that's real significant. And, you know, just the, the environmental impact of having to do a whole bunch more work to build a much more significant foundation just because we want a house five feet further back from, from an imaginary line that didn't really make an impact in this particular neighborhood. So it, so it really is about the character of the lot and I think, you know, the criteria is met. I also, you know, I'm also on the, on the fence. It's hard to say. Really to hold the line and not to. I can see the justification here. And I'm, I'm inclined to approve the variance, but I'm very interested to hear from anyone who's disinclined. Go ahead, vote and say anything.
Okay. I, I guess I was focused on this question of, you know, self imposed hardship or and, and like you said about the hardship, I, I agree that it's, you know, kind of in some ways it's kind of in the eyes of the beholder. And I, I don't, I don't think we can argue too harshly that there isn't some hardship. So I, I, I think that issue is on an issue, I guess. And being self imposed, they're relying on their recommendations about this thing, or this development. And I, I feel like I would have to trust that their builder is trying to do the best thing that he can for them. And, and I, I don't have any judgment that says that he's not. And that he doesn't know what he's talking about. So, so I'm inclined to approve this as well.
Any other comments? Don't start calling. Yes, any motion?
Is there a draft motion somewhere?
I'll make a motion to approve variance number.
Twenty four dash zero one. Well, it's case number
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve variance PC twenty four.
I'll second it.
At this point, we can have a little bit further discussion and I have one more question in my mind. Both, both setbacks are reduced by five feet.
No. The building setbacks only reduced by one foot.
That's not what the application says.
No, per code, I mean, the language, the requesting lot setbacks change from twenty foot slash fifteen foot, so that's garage slash house, not talking about porch. Change that to fifteen slash ten, so fifteen foot from the garage and one foot to the house.
So in theory, they could bump the second bedroom out to ten feet and it could be bigger because we said okay?
Yes.
So then where would the utilities go if they're being moved? Is there a, is there a, um, so there isn't, well, they're not doing a, fences on this side.
Well, I mean,
I'm just like, if we say yes.
They say they're not going to build a fence. They can still
Right, no, I know.
They still need to come up with a viable plan, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really the, the crux of it, I think, is that they don't have a finalized house plan because they don't know if we're variance. And I agree with the comments, like there's, their builder is trying to do the best that he has skills to do. Maybe he doesn't have capability of building a bigger house in the slopes.
So will we approve the building plans when they come back?
No, but our planning official will, they meet all the criteria.
Can, can I ask a question? Can we, can we move to approve this with the stipulation of that house setback instead of being a minimum of ten feet is a minimum of thirteen feet, a minimum of fourteen feet?
So if I'm understanding your question, you, can you approve in part the application, the work left and deny it?
No, I, I, that I approve with the stipulation of instead of his, instead of giving them the full ten foot, five foot, moving the house five foot forward on the house floor, that we only allow them to move one or two feet forward. And by, and basically saying we, we approve your application with this additional stipulation where we've edited what they've asked for. And that, that should satisfy their concern, and rightful concern that you have, Gary and I have, now that it's brought to my attention fully. I missed, I missed that.
Yeah, I, I got confused.
Could I retract my motion so we can go back?
No, no, we, we need to, we can, we can keep deliberating and then we can make an amendment to modify it or we can vote it down and vote again.
Would that, I guess the question would be, could you have a, approve it with conditions of approval? That's what you'd be doing.
Oh, yeah, you can, you can include, you can approve. You can approve with conditions or you can deny. Those are your three basic options. So I would say I would be careful about, in a variance context, or any context where you're approving an application, not a building permit or so you're thinking in terms of what might happen as, and projecting that as if there is an application for a particular lot or particular building footprint on this, and that's really not. This request doesn't, isn't imposed on the basis of a particular proposed footprint or building. So it's conceptual to show what might go on that lot, but it's really
We're, we're not approving this figure. We're approving this one sentence at the bottom of this first page.
So, I don't know. So in the, in general, when you're looking at the criteria, the criteria driven towards some of the comments that you heard from the chair as he was talking about, and you heard from the planner with respect to a variance, those criteria, other code provisions, not where this particular building may get built with this variance.
So if somebody applies for a variance to go from fifteen to ten, can we say, no, you get twelve, or is that, do we have the power to say that?
Yeah, I think you do. I think you could say we were, it's really an approval in part and a denial in part. So we're denying three feet.
So then I would, in this case, I would like to retract my motion.
Well,
A proposed amendment?
Yep, to modify and then we get to vote on that and then we go back to discussion.
All right. So what do we, what would we like that amendment to say? That we only want to change the garage setback and not the house setback?
My point is you don't, you have a conceptual garage in a house, but you don't have one. You understand, but I'm
Is a variance of a setback.
Well, they're asking for two variants.
They're asking for, for a garage setback change and a house setback change. So we've got both.
Are we talking about approving the garage setback and not the house setback? Would that satisfy all members of this commission?
I, I have a hard time seeing how we can make an informed judgment.
Without plan.
Yeah. I, I, I disagree with you and I'll, and I'll say, you know, if, if we were doing our, our code work and, and for some reason we want to make a specific zoning for that one lot, we could look at that lot and say, hey, that, that lot's kind of goofy. On this lot, we're going to let them have a twenty foot, a, a fifteen foot setback on the garage and a twelve and a half foot setback on the house. You know, we can just, we can do that just looking at the lot based on the general principles of setbacks.
And, and my, and my, in, in my shortsightedness of the understanding that, that you're holding what was your catch, you took a mistake, significant mistake, by the way. I believe letting them go down to ten is too close.
For the house.
For the house. I just flat out, I, I take exception to it and I would, and I would vote down this, my position would, I would, I would vote down this variance if, if we, if, if that's what we were talking about doing. I think a reasonable approach is the front, the garage has been, has been reduced by twenty five percent. A reasonable approach would be looking at something similar having to do with the house. Thereby, we are still meeting our intent of our codes. We're letting it come in, but we're not pushing it in that entire five feet.
So although what was submitted by the applicant is a conceptual floor plan, it is what we got submitted by the applicant. So I would, I would have no issue with going with what was provided conceptually and approving a five foot on the garage and a one foot on the house as the variance. Again, it's conceptual, we're not approving this floor plan, but it is what got submitted by the applicant, which would stand to reason without outright asking the applicant, going back into that discussion. What they submitted is what they had intended with what they were looking for. If you're looking for something along the middle ground there, then that would do with what got submitted as a conceptual in the application by the applicant. If the party said that the applicant is probably going to be okay with that. Yes, I agree.
And is that going to be, I know it says request summary, but it doesn't specify what would be that more specific somewhere because the lack of warnings worries me.
We only have, we only have one set of front lot setbacks that apply to this property in the zoning code. So I think that ties it to something very specific unless I'm wrong about that.
Like the more documentation on it, the better, but.
That's right. I think what you're just looking for this point is a, is a motion to amend the previous motion to allow for, to approve the setbacks to garage to reduce it down to fifteen feet and for the home to be reduced down to fourteen, forty feet. Amend your motion.
Amend your motion.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, I need to make that motion on my own motion.
Or anyone else.
Nobody could just say, so move. Just on the summary.
Say it, man. Don't move. Twenty-second. Okay, so now we need to vote on that amendment to change the motion.
The main motion.
The main motion to be fifteen and fourteen feet, rather than fifteen and ten.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Okay, passes. Remember that is, five to one. So now we have a motion before us to approve variance of five feet for the garage setback and one foot on the house setback.
We deliberate a little more.
It's time to deliberate more. John, why are you opposed?
I just think, I think the alternative to doing, to amending in the way that we've just amended it is to reopen the hearing and have testimony from the builder, that's exactly what we're looking at. We have a staff report that says everything that they've requested satisfies all the criteria. And then all of a sudden, as a planning commissioner, we said, well, wait, wait a second, we think we can write a better application than the applicant. And I don't think that's our job, that's the basis for my note.
When do you, what, what would you think we're gonna get from the builder to better inform a decision?
Maybe a more accurate drawing that would satisfy the concern.
They don't have a finalized house.
Exactly, and, and I, I think, well, as I said, I, I think there's a point at which I think you have to, you have to look at the criteria that the staff applied, and the staff gives us a report that says it meets all the criteria, and we either agree with that or we don't, but we don't, we don't, it feels like legislating, and if we're not a precedent-setting body, we shouldn't be legislating.
My, my counter to that is that when we approve these variances, the, the owner doesn't always do what they said they were gonna do. The, the, the details that they provided are not what become the restriction on what they're doing. It's just the variance that we approve, and, and this before us is just the front yard setbacks.
And Chase's report is really just comparing what the application would have said, and then we have to.
Really just about the, the variance. Mr. Green?
So let's, we prove this based on what the drawing says, which it sounds like that's the road we're going down, they can then appeal it, right? Or no?
There's an appeal process.
Can they, can they come back and just say, we have the builder plans, we have some more information, we want that extra four feet, and then we have more information in front of us, but at least at this route, they can go to the builder and say, we've been approved for this.
I don't know if they can appeal or if they just start over.
Yeah, the variance can be appealed.
So they go back to the builder and the builder says, ah, I really needed that extra three feet, that's why we put it here, then they came in and moved it. So there, it's not like a stop and it starts them all over, so this could essentially give them a green light to move forward with the builder, and then if the builder has hangups, they can come back to us. Okay.
Mr. Malo?
I, I under, I understand what you're, what you're saying, John. But the attachment is part of the application. If that attachment wasn't part of the application and it was submitted here during fact-finding, I think we might be looking at it differently, but it's literally part of their application. And I believe, is it not that the application process with the city for a variance is to provide some sort of a scaled drawing?
It is, yes, but it's a, it's a conceptual drawing.
I, no, I understand, you, you know what I do for a living, so yeah, I, I, you know, I, it is conceptual. But we, we are being asked to, to look at a variance based on a conceptual of the house.
Well, but the, but the resulting variance is what they're held to in the future, they're not held to the concept.
No.
No.
What, what's it really? I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, no, go ahead, John.
It's like, if we're saying, okay, they gave us this drawing, and this drawing clearly would fit within the parameters established by the variance, we all agree on that. But what we're saying is we don't want anything to encroach further.
I think what we're saying is that what they're asking for doesn't match the picture they showed us.
I, I get that, but we're also saying, you know, in terms of considering the, the variance, we're saying there is something, there is another floor plan that could fit within the variance that we're granting. And we're saying unless it conforms to these, you know, which everyone admits isn't necessarily to scale, if it doesn't conform to this that they presented, that, well, it's their drawing, they have to live with it.
Well, but.
And I just don't think it's good policy to say, well, you know what, they could always appeal. I mean, I don't want to make a wrong decision, if I were a judge, I wouldn't make a wrong decision on the basis of, gee, if I screw up, they can appeal me.
But, but if we approve the ten-foot house setback tonight, then they could come back with drawings next week with ten-foot setback.
Right.
And, and what, and what Mr. Malo is saying is he wouldn't want to approve a ten-foot setback on the house. That's too close for him. And, and that's, you know, that can be his opinion. So the desire was to narrow down something that he could approve, and, and that's within our rights, you know. Whether it means their need or not is another question, yeah, so.
I mean, I, too, John, you mentioned something, you used the term legislate, I, I guess sort of you're doing that, but it, it, like I asked, attorney, it's about conditions of approval. And those, as he indicated, we can make conditions for making, be what, or more what we want than what they ask for, I guess, I mean, more constrained, sure, so.
What we're doing is called quasi-judicial, so we're, we're, we're trying to apply the law as it's written with some ability to grant exceptions.
Or, and for what it's worth, it's, it's very common for a planning commission body such as a, and frankly, even at the staff level, before you even see it, to put conditions of approval on an application, and so that's very common practice, that an application is gonna come in and staff is gonna identify several areas where the applicant may have asked for one thing and it doesn't meet the criteria, but we can put conditions of approval on there so that it is meeting criteria or gonna be more acceptable to the planning commission. And often, even when coming to the planning commission, there's additional conditions that get added to an application, whether it be some additional signage that's wanted, or, you know, other things where the planning commission feels like use your term, they're maybe legislating a little bit and morphing the application, well, you didn't really ask for this, but in order to approve this, we're gonna add some additional conditions on there, and that is part of the process, so there may be some discomfort there, but it, it is pretty common for an application to see alterations for, before the approval is granted.
Right, and I would say, the primary source of my discomfort is in, you know, if, I would have a problem if the staff had made recommendations that the applicants could then respond to. But they haven't been given that opportunity. They've presented their case, granted, we can't do it, I'm just, you know, in my mind, I just, I was, my vote reflected the fact that I don't think in this case we should do it.
Any other deliberations before we take a vote on the motion?
Oh, you know what, I, Chris, question for you, Chris, so I'll, Commissioner, hands call it. If the applicant did have to take a Plan B course of action and submit a new application or an appeal, what, what, I mean, ballpark is the cost they would have to incur to do that?
I believe the appeal to the city, the appeal would go to the city council, it wouldn't come back to this body, so the appeal would be of this body's decision, and that would be elevated to the city council to review. I could look in about thirty seconds and get you that, uh, post on that, if you want me to just.
I'm just curious, like, if they, you know, appealed that, would that cost them any money, or if they had to submit a new application, I assume that would cost them, well, from the city, like, something, is that correct?
There would be a fee associated with it, yeah. On an appeal of that sort, you're gonna have a hearing process, so you're gonna have notifications surrounding property owners again.
Yeah.
Public notifications, so we're gonna go through the full notification process, similar to what we did with this hearing, including time restrictions on the amount of time to report and everything, or to submit testimony.
And does staff make a recommendation on that appeal?
We do, yeah, there's a full, there's a separate staff report that would be. What recommendation?
Can I ask the attorney a question? Okay, so if we wanted to open the hearing again to receive, and we do that and for the sole purpose of saying to the applicant, are you, are you, you got a problem with this? And, and, and then go from there, I mean, and, and that's all, for only one question, I guess, essentially. Can we limit it? I guess that's my question.
So the question is, can you reopen the hearing? You can reopen the evidentiary hearing, I don't know that you're receiving any new evidence. It sounds like you're looking for, you know, thumbs up from the applicant with respect to whether the applicant would appeal or be satisfied with this decision, which is really not evidentiary in nature. I know what other jurisdictions have done, occasions like this, is take a break, and then usually staff has some conversation with the applicant, and they can come back and give you some sense of, if that's helpful, but your decision shouldn't be based on whether the applicant is satisfied with a condition of approval. You're, you're imposing a condition of approval because the application doesn't meet the criteria, and that's your reason for a condition of approval.
The little idea of the application is to not impose undue hardship on the applicant, and if we're going to do so with our constraints, then you might want to consider that.
Mr. Green?
Neighborhood have HOA or CCNRs if they have to uphold to a building?
Um, yes, there are CCNRs in place. I can't tell you if they're specific to any additional setback requirement or anything.
Allow a ten-foot, just wondering if it would become problematic as they're finishing it. We were, you know, because then we have all the other code we worked on landscaping, whoever it may be, just.
Uh, so CCNRs are in addition to any city code, so if the city code is, would be the minimum standard, and then the CCNRs or an HOA could impose additional provisions, but they wouldn't remove the city's minimum requirements.
Right, but I wouldn't want to approve something and then.
That's out of our, we, 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 we consider that in the.
Probably the recommendation from the cities would be not to consider HOAs or other private contracts, they're not criterion for you to consider and apply.
So we have a motion before us, and I guess I can call for a vote. There's no other questions or clarifications that anybody has need to bring up? Okay, and the motion is to, as amended, amended, and it's approving the application with modifications to reduce the garage setback from twenty to fifteen feet and reduce the house setback from fifteen to fourteen feet. All in favor with that motion as amended?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? Any participant not satisfied with this decision may appeal to the city council within twelve days of the date the notice of decision is signed. Can you define what that is?
The notice of decision will be on tomorrow, and the cost of the appeal of the planning council is five hundred dollars deposit, and then it'll be actual cost, so we'll actually tell you what it costs us to send notifications out and staff time, so. Keep it under that.
Thank you very much. Our next item of business is a developed layout, not break.
Oh, yeah, very good idea.
Missing a five-minute break? National. Get your measuring stick out there. Alright, we need to start over, we'll start over, restart. Oh, we lost.
Still waiting for a couple.
Oh, they're still, they're still hot.
You're, you go home as well?
Yes. He asked if he could be excused, and we don't have any more legislation.
Thanks for having him, though, I think that was very, very.
Yeah, we always have someone at, uh, public here.
Yeah, yeah.
When we get back on that session. Or whisper in it.
We said four hours.
Yeah. Oh, no, on the.
We've done every.
Yeah.
Now we're into changing.
My fault, I started. Uh, this, this development code layout application. Same as you, boss. And a perfect.
So we'll read this whole front page. But as you know, since April last year, the planning commission began to ask about the city's development. So, um, the work is doing to you for the rest of the year. We gave a tentative schedule of the remaining year. Um, for this month, we have proposed code layout applications and review procedures. I apologize for the mix-up in the packets being together because when I had sent a follow-up email, um, because apparently the track changes did not get printed appropriately on this packet, so I followed it many minutes.
Thank you.
Um, this is still a very initial draft, and I'm really looking forward to actually doing comments and all of you about review procedures. Where see changes being made, um, I've, uh, attempted to be a little bit more conservative um, in my approach to this and preserve what we have in the code and not make any drastic changes at the gate, mostly because you hear from all of you first before, uh, maybe the knife. The existing code.
Can you describe what this draft is? It appears to be what's existing.
Yeah.
With, and your intent was to track the changes that are proposed to the existing code, because there are some sections here that we've had discussions about changing, like notification. But I didn't see track changes on that.
I think those changes got incorporated now.
But those, those did get incorporated. So they were fully implemented?
Yes.
And they're in code now?
Yes.
Okay.
This. Sorry.
I'm fuzzy on that too, but I believe.
We voted to approve and implement it into code? I thought we were saving that for a final.
I think on the notification limits, we decided to do it right away rather than let it.
I guess that would be in some meeting minutes.
Yeah. Alright, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, just to, just to clarify, um, the track changes um, didn't get reflected in this printed copy.
Right, right. But, but the document, it did have the track changes. Those are all the changes that have been incorporated today, or even discussed today. They're not already in the existing code.
Right.
And I guess the question that I have for myself and for others is, is there anything that we've discussed in the past year that is not showing up in here as a track change? Kind of discussed, is there some of our previous discussion that hasn't been incorporated here? That would be a bit of a big effort, so.
I'll perhaps out by saying there likely will be. Chase and I have been battling for time where I can sit down with him and go through the version that Pat and I and you worked through.
Yeah.
Um, he's got copies of that. Um, but it's a, it is honestly a little bit of a bear to have multiple screens open and documents in front of you and try to capture all of that, so. I fully anticipate that that'll be something that we're gonna have to double and triple check a little bit to make sure that discussions that we had are fully incorporated into this, and I fully anticipate that Chase's first run through this didn't get there. The big push here was we've moved Division Four up to Division Two. So the introduction, types of applications, all of that was cleared down at the end of our code. It seemed like the wrong place to have it. Um, so that, and all been moved up, so Chase moved all of that into what is now Division Two. Used to be Division Four, which meant Division Two is now Division Three, and Three is now Four. So all of that got renumbered and reworked, so that in itself was. And so that numbering and all that should be accurate again, we'll, we'll double check it again. Um, there's certain segments like in the introduction that got summarized or got pared down or combined. Um, so there was a little bit of that that went on. We definitely reworked, as we talked about, um, having the types of app, excuse me, having the development review site design. Uh, the land divisions, lot line adjustments, conditional use. Um, that is still there. What you'll see different is when you get to Division, the new Division Three, excuse me, no one talked about establishing the zones and land use districts administration, allowed uses. That's the part where we merged everything from the commercial and industrial and residential. Afterwards, we've merged all that together into eighteen eighty-five, eighteen ninety, eighteen ninety-five, and eighteen one hundred, so. There's quite a few changes there, not necessarily in the, well, in the text itself, because we've established a new zone. Um, but that organization put all that together, and again, that was a big task that changed. Sort of those, like, big projects, we haven't gotten into them nitty-gritty, and I don't blame Chase at all, it's been my time. And have time to sit down and really go line by line with him, we've not done a lot of the line. The big pieces, we get things where they're supposed to go. Combine the big stuff into the three, and then let's get in front of you. Get your thoughts on how really Division Three kind of laid out and looks. I recognize, um, I think in Division Three, I gave Chase a image of the allowed use tables, and I don't know if we even included it in here, did you?
We're not that far.
So it's, it's done, it's just not, um, formatted in a way that we can take it, it's in an Excel spreadsheet. And if you just try to drop and paste that into Word document, the formatting goes bizarre. And if you copy it over, there's an image, it's, it's way too small. But we just haven't had the extra hour or two it would take. So, the allowed use table is done, it's merged, like we talked about, commercial, residential, and industrial, all in one table.
So this table uh, or this, um, yeah, the, the zoning, the table contents that we're reviewing tonight is correct?
It should be complete, or if it's not, let us know what you're seeing and what's missing.
Division Two is only. Not Division Three. Just the application and review procedure.
Well, that, that's the material I have.
Right.
Yeah, and the proceeding, yeah, sections.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to figure out what he's done without having track changes version.
Oh, you don't have that?
Yeah, no. Track changes version.
You got another copy? We can print another copy.
No.
I've got it on my phone right here.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, because.
You've got a, you've got a PDF.
I did, I got.
My apologies. It came on the sixteen.
It shows it. With a cross.
Different colors. Yeah, there, and mine didn't print color, but it did print.
Right.
Underlined it, yeah.
Bring it up on the screen too, if it's easier for discussion tonight.
That'll help. Just being able to visually see the red first.
Is, is the, are the two colors just edits at two different times, or they're two different editors?
Uh.
Oh, that.
There were two different editors.
Okay, yeah.
Uh.
The one's you and one's.
It's Chris.
Yeah.
Okay. How? Bill, um, I was gonna ask Mr. Berggrave if you had anything else to add, and then I was gonna ask that we review just really, super briefly, our process so that we understand, you know, when we'll get the chance to look at this again, when is the right time to make changes? And when are we be voting and kind of consolidating in place? It's always good for me to remind myself and everybody else where we're at in the process on any given.
Side note, before we jump into that, I've got the meeting minutes. Uh, on each process signage, all that stuff, if you want it, or if anybody wants it.
It winds up with us voting and saying, yeah, interpret it now?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
What's the date? I'll just look at it when I get it home.
Anyway, it was the meeting on April seventeenth, when we actually made the changes. On it. Meeting minutes on the next meeting are not like verbose and really find out all the changes to be implemented. Um, that's kind of meeting, I hit, yes. But I assume we could have been more than following the meeting, so.
Okay.
Seventeen last year.
Right, thank you. Need to add at this time, um, like I said, this is pretty provisional, and I want to really get feedback from everyone in the room, or, uh, it's in much greater detail.
So my, my disclosure is that I did look at the track changes to see what's changed. But considering where we're at, I really want to go through and read everything that's there. Things that are not changing to kind of look for things that we're discussing or that should be different. So when is, when is our last opportunity to make substantial comments on the entire text? It's not tonight. So we've, not the date, they're just kind of.
Well, so Chase kind of outlined on a memo, we're still talking March for allowed use tables, commercial development code. April, we just stayed still with commercial development code. And we're not looking to shift into residential until May, so we've got at least another three months worth of work of bringing information back to you and bringing updates back to this body and getting feedback. Next month, intent will be, um, you know, again, however we want to do it, before we were focused on just industrial and then just commercial, and that's kind of morphed. Now it's industrial, commercial, and residential, I still think it helps to kind of look at the code in sections. And so since pleasure, we can look at, just focus on just the industrial next month and take that a little bit more line by line. Um, we can do the commercial, I, I don't know that it's overly beneficial to try to wordsmith in these meetings. I think it's really helpful to get the information that we got. Get the language that Chase was proposing, the changes. Proposed changes. Like it, it's a thumbs up, if you don't like it, you say bring us back something different that's more like this. And then let all that, you know, sausage making happen in Chase's office while he's working on it, you know, week, and then nothing up to the next meeting, so. Uh, long answer to your question, I think you've got about three months still that we're looking to focus just on commercial and industrial with our existing code, and if you do it. Stay residential will be through July, August, and I'm thinking we'll start having hearings in September, October, when the kids get back to school and people are back off vacations and and hopefully we'll look at code implementation and zone changes uh, before the end of the year, or early, early next year.
Oh, one section then, um, I see in the red line, thank you, that that things were moved around in table contents. There was exactly what we had talked about in previous meetings, more meetings as being sort of a, a performance, one would, uh, relating to light, sound, dust, debris, and, and that kind of things, that would be like a reference section that we were gonna put in multiple different zone sections. Um, I don't see that in the table of contents, but I think it probably should be added, I don't know what to call it at this point, but, um.
Wasn't it design standards? Division. New Division Four?
Uh, design standard administration? Or other standards, which one do you think it would be in?
No, we could create a new section there.
Oh, yeah.
Needed to.
Right.
Just.
I thought you were saying it. Okay, I thought you were saying it was already accounted for somewhere, but.
No.
Yeah.
Light, water, force on the other category.
Associated with light, sound, uh, dust and debris. I feel like there's a few others, I could go back through some meeting notes I took notes in. But yeah, it was more related to industrial CNI sections, commercial and industrial, not residential necessarily.
Presidential too, with regard to light.
Yeah.
At least in my book.
Well, okay, yes. Um, so yeah, I mean, yeah, it could apply to every zone.
It might be in the other standard.
But without all that text in front of us, I don't know.
That specifically, I believe it's in I believe we've got that, but it's in the, it's in the PAT version, kind of the, the full version is there, and again, I don't know that Chase has even had access to that full document yet, so I'll, I'll search for that, make sure we've got it.
In our review of the industrial, commercial zones, those sections of code, I remember that language is there, and we talked about pulling it out, I think it's on the section, if I remember.
Yeah, I think the two of us would like to see a whole-scale replacement of what's there regarding light with something much more modern with dark sky philosophy and, and eliminating the spotlights that shine in my windows.
Yeah. Um, so, I mean, that being said, um, uh, I would like to understand when we kind of talked about it back in December, about what's our kind of plan moving forward. I'd like to understand, are we, are we gonna go through these in chunks? And make sure that each chunk is like, you know, even the language, the letter is how we want it, and then vote on it. Next section, and then with an overall, let's review everything and approve everything at the very end, or what's the idea?
I, I have proposed, and it seems like that's going forward, that we not vote on anything until we can see everything.
Okay.
I, I have a very strong desire to see the updated map that we've all agreed to.
Yeah.
With the updated language of each section, just so we don't get some weird little conflicts in the city where, because the zoning configured in such a way, you've got some significant unintended consequences. Say parking regulation. And one that's always a hot one.
I don't need that one for now.
Right.
It's not, it seemed like back in April last year, we already went through DIB one and signed off and. It's not, it seemed like back in April last year, we already went through div one and signed off and approved that into code.
Not all of it. Just some language.
A lot of that was guiding this development process though, was how are we gonna notify the public that we're doing code updates, and so there was a desire to get that part approved and updated. And, you know, that was based on chapter. First, the planning commission plays is that committee for citizen involvement. That was taken first. Went through city council, so that was a reason for that, but, and then again, the intent was to commercial, industrial, you know, that approved. And stopped it, approved it. So. Yeah, this started the year, first part of last, turned it last year. It was decided, let's just get everything in place because there's so much mixed use and there's so much impact of lighting and all these traffic and all these things on different. Uses, it, it made sense to look at all of it.
And, and the other reason is I was not looking toward the public hearings where in public nation sessions where people said, well, what does it mean for my property?
Yeah.
We'd say, we don't know, we haven't got there yet.
I, I don't necessarily take any exception to what you, either of you guys are saying, but I, I would suggest we have some, some kind of like. Finalizing step where we at least gather consensus from the commission that, yeah, we all agree that this section has been gone through enough, we can move on.
Yeah, and, and I think that's what is planned for month and April for commercial, um, industrial.
Okay.
And May, June, move into the residential.
Okay. I do wanna tackle this chunk then.
But I think tonight, because we all agree that this document is probably missing some things, and I really doubt all of us have looked at it as carefully as we kinda need to before we say we're all good. I think we just, uh, actually, anybody that's got any comments at this point, make those comments. Around anything that you identified to date.
I've got some house cleaning ones, you wanna open that up? Yeah, so, I mean, skipping over, uh, I didn't see any issues with. Yeah. Then eighteen oh five, if any, if there's any comments on those, I'll reserve mine.
So, anybody have anything on that?
Lots of things to talk about.
On eighteen ten?
I'm, I'm, I have first. Uh, open them on page.
Eighteen?
Page eight.
Yes.
Page eight, that's eighteen fifteen or something.
Talk about two, three.
Yeah, I guess it is, two, three, bill in the definition, yeah, definition.
I have on page five, eighteen ten, zero sixty C. We're adding the requirement for a hundred and twenty-five percent of the value.
Oh, can you pause right there? You're talking about the track changes page, right?
Oh, God.
Cause I'll have to look on my phone.
Eighteen ten sixty C, yes, eighteen ten.
Which is, uh.
My comments don't turn until the definitions.
So I'm, that's page four on the no track changes. So eighteen ten sixty.
Eighteen ten sixty C is in cap.
Great.
We're talking about prior to final completion of work, a temporary certificate occupancy may be issued, dah 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 dah. What's the city currently doing for that? There's no financial surety or bond required? And this is, this is what we're adding here, cause that's the text that's in red.
Yeah.
Um, we have a, there is current language. Um. Can you tell you what we have in practice, but I don't have the red track changes version out in front of me either.
Talks about we've added.
Missing, or what was it?
Annual security of a hundred and twenty percent of the estimated cost for completion of the outstanding work show being a letter of credit. Secured savings accounts, performance bond, et cetera, may be acceptable at the city's discretion prior to issuing of a temporary certificate occupancy, that's the new language.
Right. And they're replacing anything.
No, there's no deletions.
No, it's, yeah, I didn't say I'm unsure, I'm just asking, what are we doing there today? Is there anything today? There's no language relating to this, cause it's, it's still, it, I mean, that C existed, it's just this portion of C has been added.
So right now, the Public Works Design Standards provide some guidance here. Um, right now, we, the design standard's a hundred and twenty percent. Um, I thought it was better to have it in the code, so that people that we can point back to the code on what's required. Um, because typically, people aren't looking at the design standards when they're submitting applications for approval, it's not till the engineers get involved that they're looking at what's in the Public Works Design Standards, so. We're really bringing forward out of the standards into the development code. Again, for the rest of the audience, typically, again, the, the city's engineers have prepared and the public works director prepared. Public Works Design Standards for public infrastructure, and in there, there's language about a hundred and twenty percent being required for security. Typically, what we see this for is landscaping that hasn't gone in yet. Um, we're waiting on light poles for Pacific Power, we're ready to move in tomorrow, but the light poles will be here for a month. It's these types of things, and so we say, hey, get us a security bond or a secured, um, letter of credit or some type of financial mechanism so that. If you don't get it done in the timeframe determined, then the city can go out and do it and we'll call the bond or we'll call the security and we'll go ahead and pay for it with that funding. Developers, my experience, and then they're really great to work with, they're more than happy to do that because they're getting the benefit of getting into their unit right now. We do hold the, we, and then we give it essentially temporary occupancy, they can occupy it, but we're not gonna finalize everything until everything's done, I don't know if it's finalized, so. Like it is, it's further in the application process so that the applicant, for a land use decision, is aware of it.
I think, I think that's a great practice of, uh, city. Um, not that it's any of this commission's business, but are you also gonna go remove that language from the design standards so that it's not represented in two places, and if it changes in one? The other one doesn't get missed?
Uh, we'll want it in both places still, we'll just update both if we need to, but I, I don't see the need to update this, I think this is pretty solid language.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, I would suggest anything else you wanna bring out a design standard, yeah, we. Commission should consider that.
Yeah, there's a large effort to. Remove a lot of the specificity like this out of the development code and keep in design standards, the design centers are a little bit easier to modify and update as needed. Um, but again, in this situation, under this site, I thought it was, we, we've had some issues with temporary occupancy and final occupancy. And outstanding infrastructure that needs to be put in place, and so. Effort to kinda help remove that a little bit, so when we do a pre-application meeting, we're talking through this standards with folks on the up, right at the front. For occupancy or temporary occupancy, and then we bring this out, and they're like, where'd that come from?
I understood you, right?
I do.
Yeah.
This may be addressed elsewhere, but how long is the temporary ceiling?
Depends on what we're waiting for, if it's light poles that are a month out, we'll go a month and a half or two months, if it's landscaping, we might go six months, it just depends on what's outstanding.
Are you suggesting that the design standards, we don't have anything to do with? If, if we don't, then. We're, I'd say we're up a creek.
You don't, those are set by the public works director.
That's silly.
But they're the, so they're the public works design standards for public infrastructure, so it's the size of the water line that's, that's needed, the depth of the sewer line. Um, you know, how much coverage needs to be over storm drain.
Allow one person to decide all that kind of stuff.
No.
Silly.
That's engineering.
It, it might be engineering, yes.
City engineer.
But it's not, well, that's not the public works director.
It's, 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 it's.
That's what I'm saying, you don't, you don't, just let one person decide things of that nature. You have recommendation. We used to have.
Staff.
They, they do, so I, I short sighted that a little bit. I'm sure I'm saying, or so I apologize, they're recommended by the city's engineer, they're approved by the public works director, and they're updated periodically, and those updates go to the city council for.
Yeah.
So they are approved by the city council, sorry, I, I, okay.
I didn't give a explanation. That, that sounds better.
Uh, from this discussion though, there, the design standards are not totally engineering, there is some really good pictures for fencing and hedges and stuff that's in the design standard that. This count, this commission might wanna consider incorporating. Just throwing that out there for your consideration, because design standards really are not, are, any of our businesses dictate or, you know, have any input on that, but. There's some good information in there that we may also wanna bring over to the, the code.
Yes, and if there's specific things, then let me know.
Pictures are great.
Yeah, we get pushback from pictures and development code.
I, yeah, I understand why.
A lot of pushback, so we can give design standard manuals, we've got diagrams on fencing, for example, giving that example that clearly show what's allowed, what's not allowed. Again, it's much easier to update those and correct those and hand those out than it is to have it embedded in your development. There's some reasons to stay away from imagery, um, to a certain extent, and we've talked about having a. To your point, we've talked about having like a downtown design manual that talks about setbacks and parking standards, all those things, and has more imagery to show pictures and diagrams, but all of it's gonna reference and point back to the development code, and the development code's gonna be black and white text that. Standards, and then you've got a, a tool that you can give to developers that talks and has the pictures and diagrams to help with that, so. Once the code's developed, in fact, if you remember, we started down the road of doing that, and then I was like, we really just need to update the code before we're doing this whole. Roll out of, of a, um, design standard for the downtown area, so that will follow, updating development code would be adding diagrams and pictures. What if, just on the development codes of this one?
Okay, so any more comments on eighteen ten? Eighteen fifteen definitions?
Eighteen fifteen definitions. I want some comments, um, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, it looks like a lot of these definitions, this section is laid out where the term to be defined is in quotations. They're not all in quotations, so I think, uh, just a matter of housekeeping. Keeping them all in quotes or somehow brackets, full point, whatever, just so that they're all consistent.
Yep.
Um. A little space, kind of abutting that first one. Um. Uh, with first real, it's not really a, a comment, but I'd like to discuss with the commission, and we had a, um. A variance, I think it was coming for us last year, that was really hinging on this definition of driveway. The. Uh, and what improvement the homeowner had to perform i- in order to divide their lot. So I, I think maybe we should take a look at this and discuss if we agree with this definition, we don't necessarily need to kind of conclude tonight, I think.
I'm sorry, was, was it driveway or lane?
Driveway.
Driveway.
Or in the, the, so there's a, yeah, drive lane, driveway, driveway apron slash approach. I mean, I think we should consider all of these and. And how are, the rest of our code references these definitions? Um, and along with that, I just wanna make sure, like, looking at everything, we may wanna come back to definitions and, and add things or.
Oh, yeah. Works through will probably.
By no means do we have any. So, yeah, so I wanted to put that for the commission. Does anybody wanna discuss that or?
I think, I think when we start to talk about parking and that kind of thing, and access to garages and all.
Yeah.
We get into the residential in particular, I think that's gonna be appropriate to talk in a detailed.
Okay, the next one, uh, I did have a comment, but, uh, definition for duplex means a building with two attached housing units on one lot or parcel. That need not have a common wall. So this. Language need not have a common wall. You compare this definition duplex to the definition of triplex. Common wall and the triplex definition. When, I don't, I don't know of a duplex that does not have a common wall, maybe someone here can enlighten me a little bit, how it works.
We have some, oh, to have like a, like a, um, breezeway that attaches them? Or a carport that attaches them?
Just attached.
Carport.
Understood.
It's the shared wall, the issue.
Okay.
Sometimes they go into shared walls, you have more soundproof. So.
So.
From a land use standpoint, like duplex really means you've got two separate living units, and that's the impact when you're looking at parking. And all those other things, whether they're side by side or they're. Impact, so that maybe it's really still the same.
Point being, no setbacks, we, because they're physically attached with a, with a roof or a carport or something.
So then would we wanna include this need not have a common wall language in the triplex definition also? Or not? I don't really understand. About the implications that would have, but. Did notice those are, yeah, very consistent.
We could, it's the same reasoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, whether you're. Setback. Three dwelling units on an individual lot, you could have a quarter lot with them. One consideration to think about is accessory dwelling units. Um, we've had. An, an issue, I won't say issue, we've had an issue come up where a duplex requested an ADU. Um, first state law, um, were required to allow for ADUs on any single family residential. To a duplex. It's a duplex on a lot, and that was, the lot was big enough for duplex, but the lot was not big enough for a triplex. We made it a triplex, and it was not a big enough lot for a triplex, so they, at the staff level, we said you. Convert that to a larger V, but you can't convert it to a U and C because a triplex is not allowed. For that footprint. So, I, I, I do think, as we're looking at this language, and again, we haven't started dabbling in the residential yet, but I do think when we get to residential, we'll wanna be thoughtful about where ADUs are allowed and where they're not, and. Um, what constitute, you know, what's the, what's the difference between a duplex and an ADU detached or a. Detached unit? It's three units on a lot, and whether we're calling it a triplex or a duplex with an ADU, isn't it all the same thing? So we'll just need to be careful when it gets to the language there, and we may again come back and visit some of this language.
If we could, uh, I go back to page. And I, I would suggest we go page by page, and if nobody.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay. I've just. And I don't know, this is not that big a deal, but looking here at clearing, uh, it, it suggests that their only. Uh, definition for clearing has to do with single family dwellings, and of course, we want it to be an issue for everywhere. Commercial, industrial, you know. All, all the different, you know, as opposed to just single family dwellings.
Yeah, that's just striking for single family dwellings, it's exceeding typical yard maintenance.
No. Um. I, I'm up page ten now.
No, I'm.
You're at nine? Or you've got something at eight?
My next one is in. So.
Yeah, it's go letter by letter.
Yes, do by letter. I, I, I just have F under floor area. And it's a general term talking about gross overall, then the net is the leasable area, I would break that up into two separate definitions. I would make gross floor area, this is what this is, net floor area, this is what this is. Because that, that, um.
Yeah.
So cha- changes like that, I mean, looking at the overall picture, I would like to do a search on all the language in all the code for anywhere floor areas. So cha- changes like that, I mean, looking at the overall picture, I would like to do a search on all the language in all the code for anywhere floor areas used.
Oh, yeah.
And see where those de- changes in definition could be applied, because it's really going to come back to where are we using these definitions and what is the meaning?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, but yeah, I agree with that.
Much of the struck out language wording that doesn't even appear in the original, like coded.
I had run up page nine, are we beyond that?
Let's letter. Letters, please.
D.
Yeah.
Very top of page nine, conservation easement.
My pages aren't the same as your pages.
Oh.
C.
Okay.
Conservation easement.
Need for conservation. Okay. Mine's at the top of page nine. Um, and that's existing language, but I wondered if we wanted to tie that, there's a statutory definition of conservation easement in the land code. And I wondered if we wanted to tie our definition to that, we could say as defined, and, and I can look up the ORS site.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, any of these definitions that are tied back to an ORS or other language. Yeah. Be probably exercising itself.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I'm in age.
I'm in.
I have some.
And, yes, just, just above the floor area, the flag lot. Uh, means a lot or parcel that has access to a road, street, or easement by means of a narrow strip of lot. I, I guess saying lot and a strip of lot, that seems to be not appropriate over there.
Well, I, I think it is, because it's a lot or easement, so it could be part of the flag lot, or that strip could be an easement on a different lot.
Exactly, but we have a, a definition for strip of lot? It's not a lot.
Actually, 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 you do, right here in our, our pictures of our earlier discussions today. These all, all, all these four lots here at the end of Fawn are flag lots where there's a strip of property. They go all the way to the right one.
We don't find it, that's what I'm trying.
No, well, that, you have, it's defined here. That's, that's where.
Well, I think surveyors use strip, don't they?
Oh, strip, okay.
They define and.
Narrow. Narrow as I make it.
Yeah.
I've, I've always heard it used as a strip of, of property. I mean, it's been narrowly used for as long as I've been in the business.
Yeah, strip of land, not lot.
Land.
Maybe that's a strip of land, yeah.
Well, but I, no, I think it's legally a lot. I think it, it's, it's important to distinguish between the lot and an easement, because the easement could be on somebody else's property.
Okay, a strip, oh, I get a lot.
A strip of.
Of a lot.
Marked as said lot.
The lot, if you want to add the words the lot.
That would work.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Strip of the lot or easement.
Add the word the.
Hold it up for said lot. Alone, if you were here, it would be.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
No, I'm not done. No, you're gonna, you're gonna.
You're up to age.
Right, hazardous substances, any substance material or waste listed below.
I, I.
It's like three bullet points that are kind of archaic.
Yeah, and I would, I would turn around, I'd go back to the uh Oregon uh structural code. And use the tables out of it and reference that, those tables, because that covers everything. And then also we'll tie it back to anything having to do with the building. I have a que- I have an issue with.
In that respect, does, is there something different between hazardous substance and the hazardous material?
Cause they are one and the same legally.
Is, is, does that hazardous material table encompass everything?
It's, it, it. The, the one that's in, the, the one that's in the building code, the state's building code, which is based on the international building code. Covers every single hazardous substance by category, going back to, to the uh. Uh.
Okay.
EPA, it goes back to EPA. That way, height here, this definition of the height, I take exception to, I know it was there before. You have a definition of height, uh, height is also defined in the code where it talks about how you measure the height of a building. However, the code itself, the Oregon State Structural Code, has the definition of how to measure height. And especially if we get onto a sloping lot, we could start getting into a lot of trouble with, with height. And actually, when I had to take my exam for Oregon, for the few laws that are different Oregon, one of the questions had to do with the. We measured the lot, the height of a lot, and so this is incorrect, so it needs to be consistent.
With the building.
With the building code.
Want Slitter? Okay, there you go.
Yeah, I have a question in J. Page twelve. We, we use the term junk in junkyard, but we've deleted the definition of junk.
Where's junk used in code though?
Well, it probably should be defined within the definition of junkyard, if we need to define it, rather than having a separate definition.
So maybe just incorporate how much of that.
Yeah. Yeah, but if you look at junkyard right below, it's, it's got nothing to do with, it's got to do with vehicles. Automobile grade vehicles.
Equivalent volume of, how many, how much junk do you have to have to equate? The equivalent of eight junk cars. I mean, they use the word twice, and I just wondered if, you know, why we did away with the definition.
Yeah, junkyard even uses the word junk in it.
Yeah, so maybe consolidate those.
Sure, that is.
Well, like, you would have, I mean, you would, you could have junk and not have a junkyard.
It'd be a stuff yard.
I think it would be.
One of the definitions of junk is, of junkyard is a place where you've got too much junk.
Wouldn't say.
The Supreme Court, I know it when I see it. Hey, yo.
The vibe is off.
Well, that's why. We take it.
Yeah.
Let's see when he comes back.
Add junk or get rid of junkyard is what it's.
Well, I think the junkyard's gonna, you're gonna need a definition of junkyard, but you're gonna have to define it.
Yeah, cause we have junkyard as one of the items in the zoning table.
Right.
So.
Yeah, don't get mad at whatever it puts.
All right. Moving along. L.
L, I got a L. Um, land use district, and then, then it's, it, the definition is as used in this title is the same as a zoning district.
Or a zone district.
Shouldn't we just, if they're the same thing, shouldn't we just use one of them?
There's no definition for zone district either.
So that means, that doesn't mean anything?
No, except there's multiple pages defining each type of zones, or the section of.
Well, I mean, the land.
Defending, defining zone, so, but your point taken is that we shouldn't use, once we come up with one, we should just use one. Unless we have to reference out. This is the way we use.
Yeah, I mean, I, I maybe just look at it and see what, what do we use it or how we use it.
Looks like he's taking notes on your point.
Josiah said. Okay.
And right above that, oh, the land use, I think there's something weird with the quotations happening there, land use, the activity or. I don't know where to put the.
After use, land use.
If you see, if you have the edit, the editing.
And they did it, okay.
Well, it, it, kind of back to what Josiah had said, there's some other ones in there, usually that you've got. And it starts out by means, dah dah dah, uh, to be considered.
As far as the grammar is concerned?
Yeah.
Yes, that sounds.
Yeah, some of these got copied in from new definitions, we heard the, um. The DLCD model code, um, where I had Chase go through, and anything that we didn't define that should be defined, we just copy pasted those over, so we can fix them for now. But most of, back on all of these, I think I had Chase go through and look at upper definition, look at DLCD model code, and pick which one he thought.
Yeah, that's good. Did you, did you take every definition here and just do a search on it to see that it's used?
Not all of them, but um.
Weird ones?
I think all the ones that have been, no, I definitely did.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
I mean, that, that seemed like a tedious process.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I did, whenever I thought it was sensible to do so, that if it was a. Either a technical term or so general as to maybe not warrant any definition, I tried to do that and see if it was used at all and in what context.
Yes.
On, on the bottom of that page, level of service. Uh, it, you mentioned level of service range from level of service A through, yeah. A, A being free flow and F four, would it be, be appropriate to state what all the, all, what if four of them are? A, you know, A through F or whatever, yeah. And say what they are?
Yeah, that seems like a reference to another code, some language we call that. Yeah, does that know about?
I mean, it might, yeah, it might be somewhere else, but it.
Yeah, it's, it's very well defined, engineering parameters, but for the purposes of this, it's, it's not illuminating, because we end up talking about. Uh, traffic studies all the time.
Right.
So it would be good to have a little more description of levels of service, or reference something that does.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might work too.
Right, oh, but.
And you have competition for trouble making.
For the minutes. Warren, you have to see this together.
Right, does anybody have any Ms?
I didn't get any further. Yes.
Uh, I'm, 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 I have one at O.
Oh, oh, you're O?
Oh.
Uh, open space. And, and maybe, maybe this is one in my head that maybe. There might be different differentiate in definitions about the common space, the private, the active, the passive, uh. Is that a good enough definition of all four of those things and maybe whatever else we call open space? And I don't really have an answer, it's just more of a question.
I think the important thing here to me is that it's land that's been dedicated as opposed to just undeveloped. But my question is, is that like a, a legal thing that they couldn't change, or is that just a practice? It's the way it's currently being used.
Yeah, and how is that definition different than parks and open space?
Well, yeah, that's, I, I've just, it, like I say, I don't really have an answer, it was just more of a.
And like, you know, if we're looking at it holistically, I'd be curious to see where open space is used, and could it be replaced with parks and open space, and maybe combine the definitions into one.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit conflicting right now.
I don't know if we've been this nitpicky, but um, some of them say like refers to or means, or it just goes into the definition. Can we clean that up a little bit? I'd prefer it to just say. Like, uh, or what it is instead of saying means or refers to, I don't think we need to say either of those words, I think it's stated.
Yeah. I would take all the means.
Yeah, just take out all the, or the refer to.
That, yeah, that's.
I like me.
There's too many, there's too many. We're not here for word count. I feel like we could save more pages.
This, mean.
Right.
Semi colons. Sure, semicolons, I love semicolons.
Are we keeping the quotes or?
Colons, yeah.
I like old print and then regular, so it's standard, but that's just me.
You get to decide, we'll try not to be too critical.
You'll be consistent. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you're consistent, you win.
Yeah.
Uh, now that we're under that, are we up to P yet?
Yep.
We already read the. Some of this, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know, do we have anything?
Oh. Parking versus storage. Um, I mean, it sounds like they're, they're stating what two different things are, and. This seems weird to say parking versus storage.
Yeah. Or parking defines storage.
I mean, they're, they are talking about motor vehicles, but.
Well, I, I think it would be appropriate to leave the parking there and define parking in regard, and, and just say that's for temporary time.
Yeah.
But I, I struggle with that not being defined, I struggle with it being defined. And then I think you could say storage somewhere else, and then say in regards to motor vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have anything in the current code about duration of parked vehicles?
No, it's not a public, that's not public, but private limitation.
No, it's.
Driveway for six years.
Yeah. There's locations on where you can store vehicles and RVs and.
So do you want to specify public parking as opposed to just parking?
We're gonna come back to parking, so I'd suggest the parking definition needs some attention.
Yeah, a lot of.
We're approaching three hours, we need.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys, I didn't mean to bink this with my midnight comment.
Wait.
Was I?
My bad.
Judean.
Uh, a couple down, pathway, walkway, accessway, um, I don't think that even, uh, is a description.
Well.
It says it may be used to satisfy, satisfy the requirements. I don't know, I don't know, maybe the, maybe under that transportation planning rule, maybe it's that.
So anything that satisfies the requirements.
Is a definition of the other thing.
Yeah, is the definition, I think.
Okay.
But it's worded a little funny.
So part of that, um, we, we reference OAR six sixty, and we say CPMC eighteen sixty five oh three oh. Well, eighteen sixty five oh three oh is now.
What I need to be on.
So all of the references in these definitions should be. I forget, the new deal contents.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, we vote. Really, we have the torches striking them, because every one of these is used in the code somewhere, so if you're gonna reference them.
Self referential stuff can be struck, but other references that are after.
That, that one, I think. Um, and down a couple of, well, the, a couple more, planter strip or tree cutout. Um. I guess that's one to me, call it one way or the other. Unless there's.
Tree cutout.
Two different things.
Two different things, a planter or a tenuous strip between the sidewalk and the roadway, and that cutout is a square or a circle for a tree. In the middle of a sidewalk.
Then we should just, the planter strip is what this description is, and so we should have a tree cutout description.
Agreed.
And unless it's not used, I've never, I've never noticed that before, but.
Yeah.
And what means? Use ours?
Uh, on the, on the, one more, uh, well, all these piece, the property line thing, is. The very first one, the property line. Is that used where none of these others are used? I, it's more, again, that's more of a question. I mean, cause, you know, like we were talking tonight, well, we're talking about a property line, the front, the back, side, whatever. Do, do we do just say property line?
Never just one property line, like when he said it's their property line, I, I get very thrown when people say that, because it's the property line, right? Like, I don't have my own property line, you don't have, you share property, right?
And, and.
Well, except.
Cut to it right away.
Yeah, in the.
Right, but like when we're talking, like he was discussing the fence, it's on their property line, it's like, well, it's on the property line, okay, I'm just.
You're gonna, you're gonna have, you're gonna have statements of certain things that is just gonna be pertaining to all the property lines possibly.
Yeah, maybe so.
Instead of just the front, backside, street side.
Yeah, I, I can see that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I.
That's why.
Need it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I get that now. Just later now, I'll be fine.
RS? E?
Well, maybe not. This one is more of a question. Maybe Chris, you could answer, spot zoning on page seventeen. Means rezoning of a lot or parcel land to benefit an owner for a use incompatible with surrounding uses. Why would we ever do that?
There's language in the code that says we don't allow spots on.
Prohibition on spots, so spots on.
Because there's language in the code that says we don't do it, we have to define what it means.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Any other comments and definitions?
Recreation, is that, that's just for one, that couldn't be for anything else?
That we come back.
Yeah. Someone's in there for that one reason.
Tangent, does that definition look right?
That doesn't matter, it seems. That's not correct, you know, we don't.
Meaning of a curve or surface at a single.
I mean, that is a definition of it.
Not a tangent. It's got to meet where, where they become parallel. And touch.
Well, that's the surface in a single point where they touch.
Yeah, it can be perpendicular or any other angle and touch, but it has to be parallel and touch.
Oh.
To the curve surface. Chase can do Wikipedia tangent now.
Lightning said about it sixteen.
And then I do have one more under T, the tract private or public. Uh, means a piece of land set aside in separate areas for dedication to the public, a homeowner's association or other entity. And then it's using examples of open space and such. Should those be separate? I mean, and, and maybe. I don't know, having public, private and all, all in the same definition, definition seems. I don't know. It'd have different definition.
You could say tract. The public or private piece of land, maybe just the private, public in the definition.
Well, that's what you got, you do have that tract, private or public.
I would say tract is the word we're defining.
Oh, 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 gotcha.
Take out the means and I would just say, hey, public. Or private piece of land set aside.
Oh, I got you.
Got more definitions?
Just one, one more on U, is US Soil Conservation Service? Is that the right term? I, doesn't seem like it here, I, I don't. You can check that on page.
I don't see that in.
Yeah, on eighteen.
That doesn't help me.
It's under U.
Under U and there's no.
Under. It's not on.
Under letter U.
Oh, unstable. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Unstable soils and stable.
Are you saying that we should just?
Well, I don't know if US Soil Conservation Service.
Oh, I see that.
Right, it's now called the Natural Resources Conservation Service.
We should probably just point to where they define it.
Well, yeah, for whatever.
It's part of the Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, you could be more generic and say it's Department of Agriculture.
Yeah.
Well, we got a few letters left. You think I think?
Um, I'm up to Z.
Okay.
Well, it says zero lot line and then it.
Multiple corners.
It feels like you should say something. Besides just listing.
I agree with you completely. Guys, we're a reader of the code, just trying to get an idea of what's happening.
See that?
So many of them out there, right?
No, 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 no. I think I disagree, I think most readers of the code are casual, they're probably going to spend as little time and as possible to get info. Rather than digesting. Somebody else's.
Yeah, I remember.
Actually, that was Z after M, I think.
Right. Did anybody, did anybody get past that and have comments?
Should we?
And.
Stop at ten?
No, I want, I'd like to get an idea of how many more comments. Maybe we could just.
I, I do have an email.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, we can, and, and anybody else send their comments to Chase.
Is that on the website? It's, uh, it's.
Unless.
Well, I, I know that.
Oh, there's. Needs attention.
Well, I mean, I mean, the, like, the next one I have was on. Uh, enforcement and it says city administrator and I just said, I'm going to call him the city manager. So I mean, there are those things that are.
Those kind of things, we don't need to talk about that.
And, and the he, he and she, I always say they.
Yeah, I know.
You know. So I guess I don't have too much. If you want to stop that, we can.
Just, is there anything that you wanted to discuss?
Uh, no, nothing I can't. Just a general comment that it's kind of hard, you know, eighteen twenty is, you know, an example for this general comment, but. In the, and the version, it's just like we struck the whole section and rewrote a new section. It's hard to see where changes actually occurred there and enforcement might be an important deterrent one in definitions. To take a close look at, what are we actually changing?
So what you can do is when you move a section, you just move the whole thing and then accept the change.
Okay. Okay.
Which leads me to a question that I was going to ask is moving forward from today. Would everyone like to retain the track changes that exist now and continue to show more track changes? Or should he accept everything that's been made today?
Sure, no.
Who knows?
I, I, I would wait until we are completely done with the complete section. And maybe, maybe be close to the fall or when we're, or we're done with the complete section. We agree on it and then we accept the tracks changes and then that's comes what we end up voting on.
But would you be okay if he accepts the move?
Yeah, I'd be okay. Yeah. Yeah, I'd be okay with.
But then like if there's any edits in there, you can like do something to highlight it.
Just, because the reality, how I'm going to review it is I'm just going to go to your document and review it, I'm not going to go back and review. It based on what's in the binder there. So, yeah, if you've just taken the whole thing and picked it up and moved.
Andy, you ready to say something?
Well, I was, maybe it was more of a clarification. But what we changed tonight, he can update that.
Yeah, it'll show up track.
And then, like what we see at the next meeting, we don't need to see this all over again, do we?
Well.
Start from.
I'm saying we should.
I, I think we should, as long as we're going through this process, we should do it because we will, at some point. Let's say we get into a particular subject that has a definition. And we go back and said, well, did we change that definition? Why is that definition that way? I mean, it's just, it's just, when I've, when I've written technical documents, which is what this thing is. It isn't until I'm completely finished with that technical document that I then go through and accept the changes. And I'm not sure if you, the next time you edit it, whether your changes are going to end up in a different color or not, I don't know how your Microsoft Word is working. And, and so. That way, that way we know what's changed from the original.
Well, no, I, I wasn't saying accept it, I leave it as changed, but not. Start next month with this again. For now. I'm, I'm just saying, don't go back and start at definitions next month. We start from where we're.
He's gonna, he's gonna make some more changes based on what we just said, so we do need to look at those again.
Okay, I, I was just hoping we could get through it and then go back and look at it.
Put your emails in with all the changes so we can.
We, we'll do it one more time.
I, and I, and I'm okay with that, it's just, it feels like you'd take a long time.
The other reason to keep the changes tracked is when we get to a public hearing. And people will look at things and they'll say everything existing is. We're just showing them what.
The changes I'm suggesting are.
One, one of the things that's nice about the, the building codes and Oregon's structural code does this. The new edition of the code, you will get the changes from the prior code will be highlighted. So every three years they put out a new edition, you know, all the highlights from the prior re, the addition.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so, and so that's what we should try to do here until it gets accepted. And, and we've gone through the process.
It would be nice to get some attention from, you know, design professionals and developers for the moment period of these.
Yeah.
That's what they're going to look for. Uh, anything more on the code for tonight? That? Uh, any questions or comments about the staff, the activity report? The very last.
So I took mine. Why I'm saying, what did I, where did I do that?
Anything else for staff to add more? You got it, put it in here, nothing since this cut. I just want to commend Chase going back a little bit. It's a lot of work to pull that together. Um, I, I. Found myself forgetting the fact that. Mr. Deppa had about three and a half, four years of working with the code before we asked him to start changing it. And Jason's not had that opportunity yet, so this is all very new and then it's like, change this, change this, change this, move this. Um, so he's done a commendable job to get as far as we've gotten, as quickly as we've gotten. I just want to acknowledge that he's been working hard at this and it's, it is a lot, as we can tell, the amount of time we're taking to student definitions. The time ten folds, you know, to pull up everybody, so I appreciate the patience. We knew we were going to have a little bit of setback, and we did. Um, but I'm, I'm pleased with the progress going forward and I'm, I made myself to continue to work with. So, thank you all for your patience, I need.
On the website, we can hurry up to speed when we're done.
You have it memorized.
And then we'll page it all again.
See a couple of green banners. Our next meeting is March fourth, according to our agenda.
Yeah.
And then we have a second meeting in March on the eighteenth.
Um, I guess one question I have is if anybody has any thoughts, updates, and they want to email them to me. If it's being a public body, is that an issue?
As long as we don't, but people should just email them directly to you and not, not be the other planning commissioners.
Please do.
Staff is your great insulator against. So you can staff your heart's delight to.
I thought you told me I couldn't tell you what to do.
No, you can speak.
Take a delegation.
So, and I know we've got, no remembers on, the one thing I mentioned early during the break was with the, our city attorney, both of them. Are retiring at the end of March and we've already gotten a legal counsel. Under contract and they'll start and, you know, formally the first part of April, they're available to us, so. I've already started some conversations with them about coming and doing some training. But the planning commission, I don't think we'll be dealing with kind of like a six hour Saturday thing. I, I think what would be more appropriate is taking the first twenty minutes of the planning commission meeting to go over a specific aspect of. Land use law or, or an aspect, maybe an aspect that we're dealing with. Uh, if we know we've got a land use application coming up for something next month. And the month before, let's talk about that issue in general terms, not about the specific application. And just kind of work with you, so, you know, over the next several months, we'll look for opportunities to have them come in and do twenty, thirty minute presentations. As part of our ongoing meetings and then they can. Bug out or go back to their normal lives and then we can continue the rest of our, our meeting that way. Um, I think. Or you're going to forget stuff after the first half an hour, an hour, just because a lot of information coming in, so.
Better when, better to get training when it's relevant.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to apply it to something.
You might tell us who the firm is though.
What was it, a Canadian? Uh, it's a beer. Hammond and. Sorry, I'm going to forget the third on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Elsner.
Very, Elsner and Hammond. Out of Portland.
Out of Portland.
I can tell you that they represent. Anywhere from a third to half of the cities in Oregon anymore, they're a very large firm. Have a lot of experience with municipalities, they have attorney experts in land use, they, so we have an attorney assigned to us. And then she has the rest of the firm at her disposal, depending on what issue comes up, so. We will be very well represented um, with this firm. And um, yeah, they have a very good pulse on what's happening in Oregon and. Um, they'll be similar to Brewer, they'll be able to bring a lot of experience to what's happening around us in the state. I think one of the added benefits that we'll have is when there are new state laws and new provisions that come forward, again, they're going to be at the forefront of that because they're already. Looking up the new laws on behalf of Beaverton and Tiger and whoever else, and then they're going to disseminate that information out to all of their cities that they work with, so. I think that'll be a little bit added benefit, we get that from Brewer and home right now with the work that they do with Morales. And a few other smaller jurisdictions, but this will be that kind of times. I don't know what, a half fold or so, so. Um, I, again, I think land use wise will be really good hands going forward, you know, with this firm. And they'll usually just be by Zoom. For the most part, it'll be Zoom, that'll be a little bit of a change for us just to save. Money on having them commute down and commit back up, so. We'll be interfacing mostly with Zoom with them, for larger hearings, they may send somebody down and be here for a, a, you know, big subdivision or something like that, but even then. Um, we do pretty good with a few little prompts, I mean, again, attorney was nice to have him here, but. Um, those little prompts can just as easily be done remotely, so. Um, I would anticipate more of that going forward and that's planning commission and city council, the city council also won't have a city attorney sitting up at the table. For two, three hours every other week, um, with a little bit of input here and there, so. Be a new shift. Okay, thanks. Last call. Need a drink?